Twenty-two, regular meeting of the village board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne has given prior notice that he will not be in attendance. Trustees Markport?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
Takaoka?
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the temporary chair for the meeting.
And I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a quorum and the meeting is called to order, so would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any citizens wishing to address the board on a subject that's not on either committee of the whole or our agenda tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay. Then we have several proclamations. The first of which is a proclamation in recognition of the service of James T. Levicki, deputy chief of Vernon Hills Police Department. James T. Levicki began his career in law enforcement as a police assistant for the Palatine Police Department in 1993, and was sworn in as a police officer for the Mount Prospect Police Department on December 28th, 1995. Jim began employment with the Village of Vernon Hills Police Department as a police officer on March 19th, 2001, and has honorably served the village in that capacity for 21 years. Jim served in the patrol division until 2003, when he became a dare instructor in the crime prevention unit. Jim served as the full-time crime prevention and public information officer from 2005 to 2008. Jim started the National Night Out Community Event in 2004, and the Lake County Law Enforcement Exhibition in 2005. In 2007, he initiated Cops on the Rooftop and the Polar Plunge efforts, which combined have raised over $50,000 for the Special Olympics of Illinois to date. Jim was promoted to the rank of sergeant on June 12th, 2008. He served on the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, NIPIS, EST Containment and Negotiations Team from 2011 to 2016. He was promoted to the rank of commander on June 11th, 2014. Jim was assigned as commander of the Administrative Services in 2018, and promoted to the rank of deputy chief of Support Services on October 29th, 2020. Jim created the Leadership Development Program Initiative, which trained and mentored future leaders within the department. He coordinated the fleet and facility functions, as well as the Career Development Program. Jim initiated the department's Pink October efforts in 2013, while encouraged personnel, which encouraged personnel, to wear pink accents to support Breast Cancer Awareness Month. He implemented the village's administrative adjudication process, and created the shared leadership team concept for supervisory development. Jim has been a great asset to the Vernon Hills Police Department throughout his career, and has served with professionalism and distinction. The residents of the Village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by Jim's service to the community as an officer, sergeant, commander, and deputy chief throughout his 21 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the president and board of trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, County of Lake, extend to James T. Levicki their gratitude for his many years of service to the law enforcement profession and to the Village of Vernon Hills. And I think from the number of things you heard me read there, he's been an incredible, incredible asset to the village. Chief, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, and first, Jim planned on being here this evening. Unfortunately, he's been under the weather the last two days and thought it was best not to come to a public event. We want to get him healthy, so he can come in this Friday for his proper walkout ceremony. You're all welcome to attend that. But yeah, you said it right. We're going to miss Jim. I'm personally going to miss Jim. He's been such an asset to the organization, and his administrative and organization skills are just second to none. And frankly, you know, it's not just a loss to Vernon Hills, but I'll tell the larger group this Friday, it's really a loss to law enforcement when someone like this retires, young enough to still work. But him and his wife have a business, and he's got a desire and passion to do something else, and we wish him the best of luck in those endeavors, but we're going to miss him.
Yeah, I mean, the number of programs and ideas and stuff that he started and promoted are... It's quite amazing, quite amazing. Next is the village president's proclamation, National Police Week, Peace Officers Memorial Day. The Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as Police Week. The members of the law enforcement agency of Vernon Hills play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Vernon Hills. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the Vernon Hills Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore Roger L. Byrne, president of the Village of Vernon Hills, calls upon all citizens of Vernon Hills and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th to the 17th, 2022, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past, present, and who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We further call upon all citizens of Vernon Hills to observe Sunday, May 15th, 2022, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And witness therefore have caused the seal to be affixed to this Roger Byrne president. Chief, you want to mention anything on this one?
I'll just say thank you to the board and the community for their continued support. Fortunately, here in Vernon Hills, we get recognized. We're lucky to get recognized throughout the year. It doesn't happen just National Police Week. This is a nice formality, but I can tell you that the officers and supervisors and telecommunications and support staff at the police department so appreciate working in a community that with such strong bonds and so much support. We know not every police department enjoys serving in such a community with so much support, and so we consider ourselves very lucky, and this is one way to recognize it, but I'll just say thank you back for that support.
Well, as I've always said about both fire and police, they're the ones that, when most of us are running away from something, they're running toward it. I mean, you know, when we hear alarms or whatever, we duck and cover, and they go to meet whatever it is, so it's greatly appreciated.
I would have had some officers here, but the reason I was a few minutes late coming myself because they were going to disturb us on one side of town and another side of town, and everyone was tied up, so it's exactly that point.
Dave, this one's for you. Public Works Week Proclamation. Ready and resilient. Public Works helps maintain a community's strength by working together to provide an infrastructure of services in transportation, water, wastewater, and stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management and first response, solid waste, and right-of-way management. Public Works is always ready to serve the community and resilient, as ever, in their abilities to pick themselves up off the ground after encountering challenges. Public Works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. The support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. The quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of Public Works officials. The efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Therefore Roger Byrne, president of the Village of Vernon Hills, hereby proclaims the week of May 15th through May 22nd, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Vernon Hills, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the problems involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and the quality of life. You want to say anything?
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the support, whether it's from the board or whether it's from our residents. We understand as Public Works officials how much we do affect everyone's daily life. Instead of my normal presentation, I wouldn't mind deferring to trustee Markport, and maybe you can say a little bit about Public Works and what it's like to be a Public Works official.
I've done Public Works for... Geez, nine years now. One of the things also when you talk of police and fire, they're also on the front lines occasionally on things. I've known situations here in Vernon Hills where, we go back a little over a year ago, where there was looting. What took place was taking plow trucks, the plows to lock-off areas, and they were involved in putting up the, in fact, putting the trucks out, and then also the barricades and equipment. So they were called upon before this, ended up getting into anything, and luckily we did not have any problems. Also, when you take a look at winter, it's great, the snow falls down, but you're looking at men and women that go out into the street, get a call at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and work from a 14, 16-hour timeframe to plow snow. So knowing what goes on, my hat's off to you for the hard work. It's... And it's not always the point of that-a-boy out there. We do it, and we do it because we like it, so.
And I understand personally that you had a holiday party, friends, family over, and when the snow is coming, you have to produce, so appreciate your help, too. Thank you, everyone.
Well, and I've said for years, it's easy to sit up here and come up with ideas for things like, you know, Vernon Hills Days, and Fall Fest, and all kinds of other events, and things we want to do in town, but we're just coming up with the ideas. Then somebody's actually got to go do it. The holiday lighting and stuff that gets put up all around town, and that always falls to you guys to do it, so great job.
Thank you, and we will be having an open house in August this year, so we're looking forward to that, and everyone can see actually what we do, and we know the kids enjoy our trucks and all their equipment, and it's a great event, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dave. All right. One more proclamation. Recognition and celebration of Pride Month, June 2022, Vernon Hills. The Village of Vernon Hills is a welcoming and inclusive community that recognizes equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning people. All residents of the Village of Vernon Hills deserve a safe place to call home, where they are welcomed, accepted, and supported by family, friends, and neighbors. Pride Month was founded on the one-year anniversary of the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall uprising in Lower Manhattan and New York City, in which LGBTQ-plus individuals and allied friends fought against harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. The nation was founded upon the principles that every person has been created equal, and has the rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness under the protection of law. The Village of Vernon Hills accepts and celebrates its residents regardless of sexual orientation and gender identity. The Village of Vernon Hills believes that all residents deserve to feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their neighbors and community leaders. Now therefore be it resolved by the president and the board of trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills that June is hereby proclaimed and recognized as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Pride Month in the Village of Vernon Hills, and it is encouraged that all members of the Vernon Hills community eliminate prejudice wherever it exists by accepting all residents as equals, by honoring our great diversity through celebrating our LGBTQ-plus friends and neighbors. Dated this third day of May, 2022. Did you want to?
Sure, if we can just jump to my report, and we'll carry on, all right? Good evening, everyone. As we just heard the proclamation recognizing and celebrating Pride Month in Vernon Hills, we also wanted to take a moment to share with the community how we collectively arrived at this moment. At the September 1, 2020 village board meeting, trustees approved an ordinance authorizing a diversity and inclusion initiative. Our DNI consultant, Dr. Brian Watkins, is with us here tonight. One of the components of the scope of services was to facilitate and support community engagement. Dr. Watkins was initially the point person for our community engagement, with follow-up from village staff and trustees as needed. From this community engagement component, members from our pride community came forward, and conversations began. Some of these community members are with us here tonight. As these conversations expanded, they have since included Mayor Byrne, trustee Cook, trustee Forster, trustee Takaoka, and others. Village staff and elected officials were asked if symbolic signs of support for the Vernon Hills Pride community was possible. With direction from trustees, it was agreed that a proclamation could be prepared with input from the Vernon Hills Pride community, and read into the record, and again when we recognize Pride Month. This was done tonight. Staff members were also asked if banners could be created to show Vernon Hills as a welcoming and inclusive community. As we just heard the proclamation recognizing and celebrating pride, we would now like to take this opportunity to formally present the banner that was created by members of the Vernon Hills Pride community. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Catherine King, a Vernon Hills resident, who was asked if she'd be able to present the banner, speak on the subject, and comment on the village's collaboration over the last year. Ms. King, would you like to approach the board?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you again. Well, I'm here to thank you, really, from the bottom of my heart. Eight months ago, we asked you to take these actions of support for equality and inclusion for the LGBTQ-plus community, and what I feel like you gave us was really overwhelming support, you know? I think even Roger said at the end, he said, "Most people know what the right thing to do is, but not everybody always does it." And it really stuck with me. So I'm just so very proud to call Vernon Hills my home. And as you all know, I'm the mom of a gay kid, and I'm very focused on the children of this community because their well-being is teetering right now, frankly, watching what's happening throughout the country in Florida and Texas and all of this, and even locally sadly lately. I don't remember what the statistic was eight months ago, but I know it's risen, and now the Trevor Project is reporting that 42% of LGBTQ youth ages 10 to 25 are having thoughts of suicide. And it's important to remember that it's not inherently prone... This community isn't inherently prone to this. The reason it's happening to them is because of how they're mistreated and stigmatized within their families and their communities. So flying the banners is a sign to all of the residents and the kids that fit into this community, to show them that they live somewhere that accepts them. And that's so very powerful. It will literally save lives. And I'm just in awe of all of your support, so we had a banner made, and it's not subtle, in fact. It's like they don't... In fact, I think they'll all see it, from wherever they are, when it hangs from the banners. And what we have here is a pride flag, and then the Vernon Hills flag integrated into it, which I think is really symbolic of what you have all done for all of them, so thank you so much. And I have a little gift. My daughter took the flag in to the LGBTQ-plus club at the high school, which is called Saga, and Ms. Christian, who is the sponsor of that, I had a little phone call with her, and I said, "You know, I want you to bring it in," because some of them voted on the design and that kind of thing, they had a part in it, "and just show them." And I said, "Be sure to tell them..." The village, it was like, fully embraced, you know? And she's like, "I will, I will." And then she had a picture taken with all of them with their hands on the banner. So I'd like to give you this. You can hang it, or prop it up, or just keep it, but it's all the kids in the high school and... Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Find a place to hang this.
Yeah. So I will leave this here, because that's yours now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your involvement in this.
Oh, thank you.
And we... Not to brag too much. We've actually been at the forefront of this for quite a while. The thing I always point to is that Mayor Byrne... I want to say 2014 was when gay marriage was legalized in the state of Illinois, summer of 2014. And that very summer, the mayor performed a gay marriage down here at our little nine-hole for some friends of a lot of us here in the village, who wanted to get married, and now it was all of a sudden legal, and so we were right at the edge of it. As soon as it was legal, the mayor was out there actually performing a ceremony, so we've been supportive of this for a long time now, so. Thank you for all the efforts you're doing with the kids and stuff like that, and bringing this forward to us. Anybody on the board want to mention anything?
That's well said.
I'm curious, who created the flag? Who designed it?
There were four designs made, and then it was brought into... There were four designs made. I think the village presented one, and then I presented a couple, and then my daughter just took it into school for kids to vote on it. And that's the one that they picked, so.
Oh, it's really nice?
Yeah, it is. I think it's going to look really great.
Whoever designed it and created it did a great job.
Oh, thanks.
So congratulations.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks again. Just, I cannot wait to drive down the street and look up, and it's going to be there, so it'll be great.
Dave, do we know what our main streets they're going to be on?
So let me add, Public Works tried two different designs. Your design was so much better than ours, so congratulations to your team for putting that together. So congratulations on that. What we're looking to do is put them up in prominent locations, whether it's in front of the library, whether it's in front of the schools. We're looking more to strategically place them in places that...
The schools would be a great thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. How many of those do we have?
I believe the number is seven.
And when are they going up?
They will be up all the month of June.
Yeah.
For Pride Month.
Pride Month is June, yeah. Be cheerful.
Right. Thanks, Dave. Anything else on this subject? Okay. Anybody else from staff have any... Anything tonight? Okay, then next item would be omnibus vote agenda? Is there a motion to approve, believe it or not, it's only A through I tonight, instead of A through AA? A motion to approve A through I on the omnibus? Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion of second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, then a roll call, please.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye?
Schenk?
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished additional business? No new business to come before the board? Anybody have any communications or new business? Okay, and we are not having a closed session after committee of the whole?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the May 3, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustees Markport?
Here.
Forster?
Here.
Oppenheim?
Here.
Schenk?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Is there a motion to appoint a temporary chair for this evening's committee of the whole meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the temporary chair for the meeting.
I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. First item of business then is the approval of the committee of the whole minute... Meeting Minutes of April 19th, 2022? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second is, any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Forster?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Second item, Vernon Hills Montessori Academy, 204 U.S. Highway 45, consideration of report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of a special use permit allowing a daycare facility. Mike?
Thank you. This business has been operating in the village for a number of years now. They've been located in Or Shalom, located on Hawthorne Parkway, and they are now proposing to relocate to the office building right across the street from the village hall. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing to consider their request for a special use permit on April 13th, and in reviewing the business, the commission determined that it was appropriate for the proposed location, and that their use would not have a negative impact on the property or the surrounding area as set forth in the standards contained in Section 18.3 of the zoning ordinance. So on a unanimous vote of four in favor and zero against, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of a special use permit allowing a daycare facility commonly known as Montessori Academy Rhythm of Dancing LLC. So if the committee feels, concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and believes that the special use permit is appropriate, then staff, then a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance approving the special use is recommended. And the petitioner is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Did the petitioner want to come up and maybe make any comments?
So I'm reading, yes, I'm reading here, I'm reading... 204, okay, so are you relocating? Or is this...
They're relocating. They're relocating from Or Shalom to across the street.
Okay. That's 21 Hawthorne Parkway, where the current...
Yeah, I don't know the address offhand.
Yeah, she just nodded. Yeah.
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 Any other board members have any questions?
No.
No? No. Okay, then is there a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance approving a special use permit allowing a daycare facility located at 204 U.S. Highway 45, uh, subject to the conditions, uh, of approval referenced in the, tonight's agenda? I, I move to approve as you just stated.
Second.
Not going to repeat it. Okay, a motion a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
I didn't hear the second.
Second.
Okay. Trustees Markport?
Aye.
Borser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay? Uh, next item, uh, Urban Air Adventure Park, presentation of concept plans for a proposed amusement recreational facility in Marketplace Shopping Center, 413 North Milwaukee Avenue, Suite 200?
Thank you. And as the, the petitioner come up and present their concept plans, this is, this would be in the space formerly occupied, uh, by Ashley Furniture. Uh, again, this is just concept presentation, so the petitioner and staff is looking for feedback from the board relative to use. Uh, and then after tonight, if appropriate and deemed, if deemed appropriate by the board, uh, then the petitioner would appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration of the special use permit, then come back to the village board, uh, for final review and consideration. And so with that, I could throw it to the petitioner for his concept presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, I'm Neil Hoffner and I'm, uh, presenting an Urban Air Adventure Park concept. Uh, I put a lot of slides together because I'm, uh, passionate about the topic, but I'll do my best to honor the time constraint. Um, Urban Air, the brand, uh, basically was started in 2011 by, uh, Michael Brown. And since then, it has grown, sorry, having trouble reading it, has grown into about 230 adventure parks, which 153 in operation and 80 currently in development. Um, it offers membership programs, casual cafe, walk-in guests, birthday parties, corporate and field trip events. They've won numerous awards, um, and some fun facts, they've had, uh, quarter of a million birthday parties, 18 million socks sold and 22 million guests served. And, uh, with these awards, uh, the main recognition is that they're a leader in the industry for these, um, adventure parks, which migrated from trampoline parks to become more sophisticated. Um, so they start, Michael Brown started Urban Air, but quickly after Urban Air became, um, a brand of many brands. So they've had a lot of, uh, horizontal, uh, diversification, um, kind of finding, finding other, uh, businesses that kind of integrate well, which share the same, um, same key areas of learning, playing and growing. So these are some of the brands that they've acquired. And the vision with that is, uh, for example, if you have an Urban Air, you can take a Snapology, embed that into one of the birthday classrooms, which will help during the weekdays and allow kind of like a STEAM curriculum, uh, for some of the kids. And then on the weekend, you could convert that back to a normal birthday room to allow for, uh, the conventional parties. So it's, it's kind of a vision of growth that, um, that Urban Air kind of keeps. And they just bought some other, um, business, I think last week, um, some esports ones. So he's always kind of, um, growing. Oh, and also with the leadership, uh, what I liked about the brand is all the executives don't have the same last name, like at what I've seen some other franchises. He's, he's picking people from Six Flags who are presidents there, um, from Supercuts, from Gold's Gym, and kind of taking that talent and some of the principles they learned and consolidating to the own brand to help grow it. Uh, these are some of the park attractions. Uh, they start off as a trampoline park, so you'll see a lot of trampolines that have kind of specialized functions. And what I like also that they do is they have, um, a kids under seven area. So when I bring my kids, I like to kind of stay there where they, they're not in the way of the bigger kids, um, and they kind of have their protected area. They also have dodgeball, Prozone Performance Trampolines, Wipeout is one where it's kind of fun, where, um, they have a couple beams that spin around, you could duck or dodge, jump over them and try to be the last person standing. Slam Dunk Zone also for basketball, um, to help you kind of finally reach the rim if you're not too tall like myself. Um, the other ones they have too are, um, bumper cars and the spin zone. So these are kind of housed together in, in one area, about 10 to 12,000 square feet. And, um, they're kind of controlled, so, um, you can't go too far with it, um, it'll, it'll kind of stay housed within that, that confined area. Uh, Climbing Hill kind of for the younger kids. And what I like too, um, is the climbing walls. So they're, the kids are hooked onto an autobelay system, so they're snapped in, in a harness and they can climb. And if they fall, then they have this, um, tethered machine that kind of, um, allows them to fall gracefully without getting injured. Uh, they have Drop Zone tubes, uh, playgrounds, kind of for your younger crowd, kind of what we grew up as with McDonald's. This is kind of, uh, between a 10 and 15,000 square foot play area that the kids love. And it's embedded with your adventure hub. And the ropes course is part of that adventure hub, so it's, you're kind of elevated 12 feet in the air, you're harnessed in, and then you can kind of go around like a ropes course. So it's kind of fun, challenging for the kids. Sky Rider is probably one of the signature attractions. It's another, um, device where you're harnessed in and you're kind of zip lining around the front of the, the entryway. Um, it's, it's very unique and I've never seen another park, a trampoline park offer this. Um, the other one's the Warrior Course and Battle Beam, which is just a balance beam and then you fall into a foam pit if you get jousted off. What this park is going to be different, um, is because with the, the square footage being more than 45,000 square feet, um, this allows us to become a 2.5 park. The basic parks are 2.0, 2.5 would have your premium attractions, which would be go karts or, um, they have like a, uh, like a, uh, like kind of like a, a wind tunnel that people can go through. So you could pick one or the other, go karts, which is kind of something that people could, um, could replicate. Usually if you do the wind tunnel, people like to do it once and they don't repeat that, that experience. So that's why we decided to go with go karts. And then laser tag would be another option that we could do. And with the business brand success, like, the key things I wanted to point out were, um, with COVID, this has been a, a bad time that a lot of businesses experienced because we're non-essential services, so they were quick to shut down. Um, but we had no forced permanent closures with that. So, um, this, a lot, um, a lot went into that number of, of zero closures. The, the franchise worked with the franchisees a lot, especially with the royalties coming up with a, a action plan of how to respond to COVID incidents and also teach people how to work with their lease and with, um, getting aid like, uh, PPP, ERC and, um, those kind of things to help keep its members, um, open. And then with COVID, um, kind of, uh, the numbers kind of going down and people are starting to open back up, uh, this has reflected in our revenue. So each year, 2021, kind of outpaced 2019. And now we're, we're kind of setting records again for, for revenue. And there are five mainstreams of income, uh, for, for revenue. It's the membership program, which is something that, uh, separates us from other parks. It's with, with the membership program, people who want to frequent these parks can do it, um, at a very valued, valued, um, cost. So it's, uh, like a one-time cost would be a lot more expensive than if, if you have a membership for 12 months. And the, the membership for 12 months would also kind of flatten your seasonality that you would experience normally, uh, with peak seasons like summer and spring break. So this, this is something that kind of helps, uh, keep a consistent flow. We also have the cafe, walk-in guests, birthday parties and some corporate events. And this would be like the, your normal walk-in ticket prices. And it's, uh, it's kind of phase where you, you can pick which attractions you want and what price you want. Um, there's some premium ones and the basic packages. And contrary to that, you also have your memberships, which, um, which give a lot more value, um, per month. And this is the fast casual cafe. The important note here is, um, everything is linked up to, um, like a, a same system. So it's where everything's tracked. So the number of pizzas you're selling, um, number of sodas or slushies gets reported and you have access to every park data within, within the US. So, uh, this allows the Urban Air to kind of pick to see which, which stuff is really selling and which things may not be as popular, which, um, allows them to kind of keep some stuff off the menu that doesn't have the good turnover and focus on the, the stuff and enhance the stuff that is selling. And also with the membership, the monthly memberships, a lot of them offer like a, kind of a meal plan with it too. Um, some of the strengths, um, the main takeaways from here is there's a high barrier to entry. Um, it's with the square footage and the, the high initial cost, um, it keeps a lot of competitors away. A lot of trampoline parks don't have a cafe. They may have like more of a concession stand. Uh, we have the highest EBITDA in the, the industry, which is reflected from the numerous awards they have. And the, the executive talents that we pulled is from, uh, Topgolf, Six Flags, Planet Fitness, Gold's Gym, Christian Brothers and, uh, Supercuts as well. And the main target audience we're looking for is children age four to 15 years old. Some of the weak, uh, weaknesses that we have, uh, high overhead costs. This, um, this comes with high rent because of the large square footage, um, high loan payments, expensive utilities, um, except for the management, our labor pool that we mainly have is between 16 and 25 years old. So with that age group, you have a high turnover. And, um, even though the high barrier, the high cost was a strength for barrier to entry, but it is a weakness because it's, um, it's, it's very expensive. So it's kind of double edged sword, you know? Not everybody can do it, which is good and bad. Um, it kind of slows the growth of, of Urban Air as well for the number of franchises. And there's a limited number of operations. This is mainly because since, um, the age group that we, we target to, um, the hours of operations are kind of after school. So this is the minimum hours. And then during the summer, we'll, we'll open those hours up more. And with threats, um, there's a lot of injuries that could happen, um, which kind of has a, it has a high insurance. And you could get bad PRs even though you go in there and sign a waiver, but still if something happens, it's your responsibility to, to provide a safe environment. And pandemics such as COVID-19 has been, um, something we've really had to overcome or work with. The opportunities, uh, when you have an Urban Air, you tend, tend to not have other brands that come by, so your area is kind of protected. Parents want their kids to be physically active and have, develop social skills. And with the, um, with the family of brands, it allows Urban Air to grow as well. Um, and more specific with Vernon Hills, this was a, a targeted market because, uh, we looked at the, the dem, marketing demographics and the benchmarks that we had, such as, um, Urban Air wanted to have 31,000 per capita income and Vernon Hills, as far as exceeds that. And also you look at your population of your kids and the population of, um, the parents making the kids, and those are very ideal, which hit our, our benchmarks. Um, the age groups that we have, zero to five and six to 14, I would like those numbers if they were switched, but I think with, um, the young adults becoming, um, into that area of, of the baby makers, it'll, it'll kind of make up for that gap. So that's kind of what we're seeing here, specific to Vernon Hills. And this is nearby market information with the competitors. Uh, the other one that we look at is the number of Starbucks you have and Targets. This is an indicator of discretionary income. So everything looks good with, with this area. This is the other areas, um, near Chicago that Urban Air, other franchisees are located. And this is where Vernon Hills' proposed location would be at. Um, so when you sign the franchise agreement, you have a protected territory that's based around 45 to 50,000 kids where they block out the zip code. So that kind of keeps us from cannibalizing each other. And specifically, this is the, um, the shopping center that we are proposing. This is the old Ashley Furniture site. And, um, the requirements that we met here were to have about 18 feet ceiling height for the, this, the zip line and that, um, the, um, some of the other attractions, like the climbing and the, the ropes course. And the, the main thing we like about, um, Urban Air is it gives a, a place for children escape. My background is, uh, we, I own a childcare facility and it's very structured. What this presents for kids is kind of a way out, you know? Not to have the, the rigorous routine of always correcting them. It allows kids to become kids and kind of escape some of the, the things that, um, may be plaguing them with, uh, being on social media, uh, being bullied at school. And it becomes a place to celebrate some special moments. So that's kind of what we like about it. Any questions?
Questions from the board or? Trustee Schenck?
Um, hi. Nice presentation. Um, a couple of questions. First, is it franchised owned?
I'm sorry?
Are they franchised owned or is one company owned? How, what's the operation?
So it's, the majority of them are, are franchisees.
Is that what this would be?
50% of the franchisees own more than one location. And there are probably a handful that the franchise actually owns themselves, which is good because, um, when you bring a new attraction in, the fran, the actual franchise will develop a new attraction within their, their own, um, facility to kind of do a test market before you have somebody else, a franchisee, kind of spend that capital and test it out if it may not succeed.
So the franchisor will?
Franchisor probably owns about five of the repair sites.
So who will own this one?
I would own this one.
Are you the franchisee?
Yes.
Oh, so you're the franchisee?
Yeah, I will.
Oh, okay.
This specific one will be me and my wife.
Okay, okay. So, um, obviously you have the relationship with your franchisee and, and what you pay to them. The equipment, who does the inspection on the equipment on a regular basis?
Uh, so...
And I like, I like who pays for that? Who inspe, who does the inspection? Who pays for that? What's the relationship?
The franchisor will have a, a program where, so the physical inspection would be done by your general manager, but you'll have frequent visits that come from the franchise. And they'll, they'll do, um, periodic stop-ins where they do it. And also when you do your, your inspections, you create a ticket. Say you have a, a trampoline with a bad spring, you create something called a Zen ticket and these go in and they get monitored to see how fast you respond to them. So everything gets logged digitally.
So my concern from here is the, um, the cost to fix something versus keeping it online compromising safety, say like harnesses, things like that. You have a protocol to make sure?
They have a protocol and they also, um, keep, w- with the number of franchisees, they kind of know which items are going to break down the frequency of them. So, um, like springs, you'll keep a lot of those common parts on, on hand. But like say bumper cars where, um, they, it's high impact, things could go wrong, they recommend for a site this big that you keep a full-time maintenance man.
Okay, yeah. Because my biggest concern, you have, I mean, you've got harnesses where these kids are on rock walls.
Mm-hmm.
Zip lines, right?
Right.
Like you're talking about the main, like those are the big safety. That's what I'm just talking about, to make sure that, who has oversight on that safety? The franchisee or the franchisor or?
It's, it's, so the, what the franchise will provide is, they'll provide, um, it's certification that, that each employee has to meet. So they'll, they'll teach you it. And one of the first videos they show is, um, someone who wasn't secured, they, they fall off the, um, the, the Sky Rider. And that way it really ingrains in you how, how serious this is. So they have, um, they have these steps you have to take that tell you exactly how to secure the harness. And you'll have, uh, a staff member who's there to basically double check it. Um, they also added, um, instead of walking off the ledge where you're there, they added kind of a, a little drop so you can kind of do a test drop before you go out.
Okay, I understand. I just, my concern is just to make sure that... I, my concern is just to make sure that, that the oversight is there.
Right.
To keep your patrons safe, because your patrons are obviously.
Right, and another key thing too is, um, with the brand, they, they do kind of like a package deal to go to the same insurance company. And one thing was like the airbag that people do flips on, and there was no indicator to tell if it was on or off. The insurance company came back and said, um, you guys need to add this because if, if there's a couple places had injuries because kids ignored the barrier, jumped on it, they weren't inflated, and they got injured. So they would be uninsured, um, this device would be uninsured unless they provided some kind of remedy, having indicators besides just walling them off. So the insurance company helps enforce a lot of the safety as well.
I noticed that your local competition was Skyzone?
Skyzone is just kind of north, maybe a few blocks.
Yeah, yeah, it's about a quarter mile away, yeah.
Yeah, um, I feel like our product differentiates. So we may compete on the basic trampoline package, and they, but I think the premium attractions will really differentiate us from them. And I think there's an X factor kind of in line as well.
Do you go to the slide with the, uh, the target market and the polygon? I'm a little confused as to what, what the area actually is, because there's, yeah, you were there a second ago. Is it the black? There's also red areas that are outlined?
Okay, so that black, um, that's my, my protected territory that they blocked out by zip codes.
Okay.
Because they blocked that out to give me, um, the territory of 50,000 kids.
So that's where you're allowed to send advertisements to based on zip code?
Yeah, and that's, and.
Or, or do you check when they come in, say, oh, you're from Northbrook, you can't come?
No, not, not really. No, I'm not going to push anyone out the door. What it, it's more to do, like, say, if someone is, um, like, south of Highland Park, that I don't have another franchisee, try to have a, an Urban Air there. It protects Urban Air development, um, inside that area.
Okay, so it's the black then and not the red?
Yeah, the, the black is, is my boxed-out zone, and it's a 10-year agreement that I could exercise after 10 years.
So they could have someone just south of Buffalo Grove then come in, even though that's
They could.
much closer than, than Glencoe or wherever.
Right.
South of Highland Park.
But then you would also look at, um, I don't know if I had it. Yeah, this area too. So when I was exploring this, it was Schaumburg was offered and Gurnee, and also Vernon Hills. So out of those, Vernon Hills was, was the best with what, what they provided. And Gurnee was kind of really close to Six Flags. Yeah, so.
Not close to there.
Yeah, it's right there. So close, it's there.
Yeah.
And I added Milwaukee there because it's a very large park, and ours will be similar to them in, in scale.
With regard to the oversight and that, that trustee Schenk was asking about, is there any outside oversight? I mean, and staff, do we know anything about like up in, like Great America or that? Does the county or Gurnee or have any outside oversight on that?
Uh, we're going to be investigating that because I, I took a note based on trustee Schenk's comments about investigating what third-party inspection agencies are out there that handle those kinds of things. Uh, we can educate ourselves to that and maybe even consider it as a condition of approval. So we'll, we would work on that as part of technical review prior to a public hearing. Right now, I can't answer your question.
Yeah, because I know because of insurance and stuff like that, you, you would probably be very diligent about the safety inspections and that, but it is a little bit like asking the fox to count the chickens every night, so.
Right, and it's even with the insurance policies, the franchise will have one, even the, the lease, lease order will have one as well. So we have to basically, basically go on the high side of, of both of them when we get our insurance policy.
Insurance policies are one thing, but if you're calling the insurance company, that's because somebody got hurt. And that's what we're trying to say, we're trying to avoid. Which you would too, of course.
Yeah.
I think, I think I'm hearing independent third-party inspector is part of, inspection is part of this. And we can, we can figure out how to make that happen and, or what options are available, and then make that a condition of approval, so. Good points.
I have a question. The ideal child range said five to 15, I think it was.
Mm-hmm.
That's ideal. Are you allowing older kids?
Older kids are, they're always invited, even adults. But, um, once they start driving, they, they tend to kind of want to do something else and hang out with the friends. It's, it's like a new freedom that they have, so while they're younger, it's definitely will have.
Is the equipment?
It's age-appropriate, so, um, like the Ninja Warrior Course.
Yeah.
It's designed for kids to be able to finish them. Some of them seem like you have to be kind of a really in shape, you know, 18-year-old to get through, through them. These offer challenges where a nine-year-old could finish some of them, but there's three lanes. So they have multiple degrees of challenging.
Could a 20-year-old walk in and do bumper cars? Would they fit?
Yeah, so, and, um, that's a good point too, because a 20-year-old could do it. But this little Urby guy, a lot of kids don't like him because he stands next to the attraction with the little meter stick.
Oh.
To, so if you have someone who's face smaller than 42 inches,
Yeah.
you'll have bumper cars that, that have tandem, so it'll have two seats, where you have to have someone who's old enough to drive the younger ones, or you have the single-seaters too.
I think what you're saying is like, can we like go on the bumper cars?
You could do it, you could do it. Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board, anything else from staff on this? So what you're looking for is just a general consensus from up here, correct? As to whether or not to go ahead to appear before Planning and Zoning and that?
Yeah, move forward.
Trustee Abenam?
Looks very exciting, yes.
Trustee Markort? Trustee Schenk?
Sure, good luck.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. I think that gives us consensus.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, you'll get back to us on the potential third-party inspection stuff and that?
Yes, sir, we'll do that. We'll, we'll have that figured out before we schedule it for a public hearing.
Well, I wondered about that because I wondered if, you know, especially a part, a place of them sizing that of Great America, uh, who does their inspection?
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, like the carnivals that come into town, I, I, so we'll just figure all that out.
Yeah.
And independent, I think, is key, and then, you know, qualified to do the inspections.
Mm-hmm.
Figure out what the appropriate routine is, get all that figured out, and then just make it a condition of approval in the ordinance, if, if ultimately it gets approved.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Does, does the village attorney want to say anything?
What's that?
Did the village attorney want to say anything about the concept?
About the concept, yeah.
Yes, he has to, uh.
Yep.
I can give my spiel.
Yeah, please.
This is directed towards the applicant, so tonight's meeting was a concept presentation, a concept review presentation. You've heard the comments and questions from the board members, so you can take these back with you and continuing to develop your application. That'll be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission soon. Uh, based on that commission's report and recommendation, the Village Board will have one more chance to review and consider your application for zoning relief, at which time a final vote on your application will be taken. Tonight's meeting did not consist of any final action on the application, and while it may provide guidance to you in this process, it should not be taken as a guarantee of any future outcome. Uh, thanks for your presentation tonight, and best of luck.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, Counselor, I wasn't trying to deprive you of an opportunity.
You know, I typed it out too, so I was going to be a little upset if I didn't get asked to say it.
Okay, um, is there anything else then? So, and no closed session, so we're looking for a motion to adjourn committee, the whole, correct? Motion is there, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.